I would like to call to order a special meeting of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and the City Council of the City of Victorville. Concurrently, I would also like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville in Southern California and the City Council sitting at the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District. Public comment is item number one. Anyone wishing to address the council, step up to the podium. This is under public comment. Mr. Hoach, you're on number, item three, right? Okay. We're now going to item number two.
In the, item number two, under discussion, possible action by the board was requested to be put on the agenda by Councilman Rothschild. Is that the item?
Oh, this is the Jim Worsham one here. Here it is. Yes, I've given everybody a little bit of a summary of what Jim is proposing on his ongoing contract. To make it very simple, what I'm asking for is a contract agreement with Jim Worsham, $100,000 ongoing to the end of the year, and continuing with the agreement that any business brought into SCLA on installation would be a commission-type basis. As I understand it, there's an agreement kind of between the city and Jim over the commission part. There's still a question on the $100,000 going forward. So, as you look down the list of things that Jim Worsham has been involved with, you can read his letter that he sent to me, and I gave copies each to the council members. There's also a kind of an outline of various projects he's been directly involved with. It's a tremendous list, and I submit that half of this list wouldn't even be here today without Jim's direct hand in that, especially the AP program, which I think he had a very direct hand in getting a significant start on, and the personal efforts that he's put into that. You pay a school district superintendent hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I'm not suggesting the AP school measures up to a high school or elementary school district. Nevertheless, that AP program is going to produce jobs at SCLA. That's what we've been about for all of the years that we've been working at former George Air Force Base, and this is a direct link to job creation and career maintenance in the area. So, I don't want to lose Jim Worsham. He's got programs he's involved in today, looking forward, that I'm sure will not even come to anywhere close to fruition if his presence isn't there. Did you have that little schematic I had a hanger thing? One of the visions he had some years ago, and it's still in play, and matter of fact, more so today than ever before. Each of those four hangars out there, four-way hangars, are as big as the big hangars, the brand-new ones we've built, except this would be a complex out there at the airport focused in one spot, and that's not a pipe dream Lockheed Martin and FedEx and Boeing and Northrop. Those are all personal connections of Jim Worshams that he's working on and are very close to some of the companies saying, yes, we have a very direct interest in this. This complex, by the way, can be built one hanger at a time or all at once, depending on how the business were to flow in and the commitments from the various companies. So, you can see just by that schematic and the list of activities that Jim has been involved with, that we can't afford to let this gentleman's skill and his experience go away. And I know that we're pinching pennies right now in an incredible way that I've never seen the city before focus in on. And I'm asking for consideration of $100,000 on an ongoing basis here as a platform of his contract, plus the bonus as you get a FedEx or a Lockheed Martin, which is the government contract to maintenance on the C5s and the rest of them going. If you get those coming in, each one of those are hundreds of jobs. That big hanger there could be worth 1,000 jobs altogether when it's in full production. So, anyway, that's what I wanted, when I heard that we had canceled his contract. I wasn't sure the full status of it at the time, but that's my proposal to the council is that they consider Jim Worsham's contract and grant him an extension on that one.
I'm okay with it.
What we see at former George Air Force Base, most all of that which is there is a direct result of the actions and the tenacity of Jim Worsham. I don't know who we have. I mean, we've got basically three people. We've got Keith, and we've got Peter. I guess that's it now in terms of direct involvement from a historical standpoint. Who would pick up the pieces with some of these things that are ongoing? So, I have no problem with your recommendation.
I cannot support that recommendation, and I'll tell you why. We asked our city manager to look at all the contracts, because we had a bundle of these contracts, and we're in a tight situation financially, and we asked him to look at all the contracts and come back with us on individual contracts and recommend to us how he would like to proceed with those. And I think he did have a recommendation on that one. It wasn't the $100,000. Mr. Cox, am I correct?
Yes, you're correct, Mr. Mayor. What happened is shortly after I began reviewing contracts, we had actually two contracts at the base, Mr. Worsham, Mr. Fox. Mr. Fox is not a part of this discussion, but they, similar contracts, they worked at the base. I gave the city council complete reports in regard to the contracts, what had been paid, and at that time, they included this same information, I believe, in regard to what they had been involved in. Contracts had expired, I believe, in November, December, January, I can't remember, but they had not been renewed. They were ongoing, and of course, when I got council's authorization to cancel contracts, I did so because the intent was to renegotiate those contracts that were necessary. That one came back to the council very rapidly with a request that it be continued through June, and the contracts were signed. They were to come back for the city council for reconsideration or to the manager for reconsideration based upon, I guess, mission accomplished or accomplishments from January to June, and primarily, I guess, because of the economic times, there were no accomplishments during that period of time, or very little. I had indicated that since the city was cutting back and laying off employees and canceling programs and finding it very difficult to even submit a budget, that I would be agreeable to a performance contract, and they would have to be negotiated because each item or each incident would have to be separate in regard to what you pay in regard to some kind of a fee. And it would be on the basis that you didn't show up one day with something in hand and say, you owe me 10%. It would be on the basis that contractor or the consultant would submit a calendar of the things that they would work on, and then there would be agreeable fees if they were successful in regard to those issues. During the reorganization, I had notified redevelopment that they were going to have to be cutting substantially and also the base, and I previously have told the council that the airport is substantially in the hole. And I shared with Keith Metzler, who is now in charge of the base, that he needed to look at half a dozen items. We discussed those and look at the contracts. And I know that he had looked at this particular contract, and we had discussed it a little bit in regard to what his needs were and what he could justify and what he was working on, and where he could use help or not use help. But I guess because of the time, and we have been awfully busy with other items, that before any kind of an agreement could be negotiated with Keith Metzler, that the item came back to the council. But Keith is prepared to discuss the matter with the council if council is interested, since he is in fact in charge of the airport base activities.
Well, yeah, it was just my understanding that we were going to continue to engage Mr. Worsham in the same way that we did Guy Fox, and it's my understanding that staff has been working on that with Mr. Worsham. I'd like to hear from Keith Metzler as to the status of that. I, you know, I have not worked with Jim as long as the rest of you have, so I think Jim's an honorable guy. I think there's a lot of good that he can do. I just, I think I'd like to hear from staff on where they're at and talks with him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I have had the opportunity to look at the issue involving the contract, not only involving Jim Worsham, but also involving Guy Fox. I've inherited this for about maybe 30 days now, and one of the most important things that I was tasked with was taking the consideration of Mr. Jim Worsham and his contract. One of the things that I found as a part of my exercise, especially at this time when funding is constrained, I mean, very plainly put, I think the characterization of the operations at the airport running thin, that is exactly correct. We are operating paper-thin in terms of revenues versus expenditures, which causes us to take an extremely keen look at extracurricular expenditures. And I think even though Mr. Worsham has been extremely valuable, there's no question about that, and his value to the success over the past, we're at a time right now that, given our finite amount of resources, we have to clearly identify what exactly our needs are. What Mr. Worsham does is definitely in that realm of marketing. He's been very successful. But one of the things that I did find that I was troubled with, but I think perhaps helped make this exercise a little bit easier, was the fact that he had a fairly general contract with respect to what he was being asked to work on. And that being said, it was difficult to clearly pinpoint progress as to those items that he was working on. He had a very large breadth of projects that he was working on. And at the end of the day, one of the biggest challenges that we were running into was, if in fact he's successful in a lot of these projects, are they in fact projects that we can carry out? You know, one of the most fundamental beliefs I have when you're marketing is we need to be marketing things that we actually can follow through on, that we can actually fulfill. So, let's market resources, the availability of resources, that we can actually follow through on at the end of the day. So, with that in mind, one of the things clearly that has been making it easier is trying to identify what resources we do have for users. One of the hardest, one of the nicest luxuries we have at the airport today is the fact that our hangars are leased, and they're leased in large part due to Mr. Worsham. But in that regard, it makes very little sense to continue to market to users that need hangar space that we just don't have available. So, this has allowed us to be much more precise in terms of what we want. One of the clear items that we've determined worthwhile pursuing is pursuing aircraft companies such as Boeing who have interest in flight testing and expanding their flight test programs to where there may even be willingness from them to build their own hangars. That's something we can accommodate because we have land. But if it was a case where they need hangar space, we just are out of space and we can't fulfill that need. So, one of the things that I have done, and I literally just haven't gotten to being able to extend some kind of contract to Mr. Worsham, we're getting there, is developing a contract that's very pointed in scope and very pointed in how that individual got compensated. Mr. Cox was absolutely correct that we have evolved into trying to establish a contract that's compensated more on a fee-for-service, more on a brokerage-type relationship. And when we had first commenced discussions with Mr. Worsham about that, he was opposed to it, but as we worked with him and had him understand the financial constraints that we have as a city, also to get him to understand the much more narrower scope that we're going to look for him to perform, he actually came around and started working with us, and as of last week, he was very acceptable to working on some kind of brokerage relationship with us. If it was a very clear-cut council asking staff to develop a contract and just pay a straight compensation, I would have to advise to you right now, it'd be my recommendation, that based on our dollars and cents position today, we could not do that. I would not recommend it to you because I could not measure the results within the operating period of the next 12 months, that is our fiscal year. But if it was a restructured contract in such a way where it was based upon performance and we clearly established a schedule of pay to where that schedule of pay caused net-zero effect to our O and M for SCLA, that's a different story. That's something that we probably could support, and that's probably something that could be the middle ground with all of this. So, with that, that'd be a path that I'm willing to pursue, but definitely take your direction.
Let me just add to my comments, and I know what Mr. Worsham has done at the airport. We've seen his work, and this, my reluctance to you, except just to clear $100,000 a year is not based on anything else other than what, we're in the financial bind. Our staff, including our city manager, has been directed to look at all the contracts and basically come back with performance-based contracts, if it's merited. And so, that was my only reason for that. If you come back with a performance-based contract that's acceptable to the city and to Mr. Worsham, then certainly, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
I do have something that's drafted, and it's something that I was planning on extending to Mr. Worsham. I wish I could have done it sooner because he's been very clear with us that he was going to work through July on his own dime. I just did not have enough information up until very recently to be able to put that together. I did put something together last night that I feel comfortable in extending to him, and at the same time, I think it's responsible to the organization to where what we're asking him to do isn't going to cost the authority directly unless he actually performs. One of the things that we did get to look at, and I think it's measurable in the contract, is that we got him focused on certain projects that I think we decided we just did not have the capability to do. Something like Boeing, the flight test program is an example, that I think he probably is the best equipped to be able to broker and do that deal. But there were also several other things that he was working on that certainly between myself and Mr. Soderquist and the staffing that we do have as support staff to the organization, there are definitely things that we could take on to keep him focused on what is really important to the authority. So, what I have drafted, I feel fairly confident with, it would require us to extend it to him, and then of course, there'd probably be an ensuing negotiation. And not sure if what we have put pen to paper on is acceptable to him, but it would at least allow us to start that negotiation process. The delay is not to construe, that we did not think anything less of his importance. He's extremely important, I know, to you and also to staff. We'll move forward, and I think with your support, we'll go ahead and extend something to him that is responsible to the organization and bring it back to the council if we can come to recommended terms.
I'm going to take your word for it, Keith, that if we could afford the $100,000, it's value-added in my way of thinking, a security item for Jim not leaving or either retiring or going someplace else. I'm not sure where else he would go, but fact is that I don't want the contacts and the expertise that he has, the potential that he brings to that airport out there is incredible. I mean, the jobs that could come out of the FedEx contact and the government contracts with the C5 maintenance program. And he made an observation that I, at the time, I didn't think anything of it, but it's probably quite true, is you'll notice that the current federal administration is cutting back on brand-new development. Well, if you think about, think that through for a minute, the flip side of that is if you're not going to build new stuff, what are you going to do? You're going to maintain the equipment. You've got the C5s and the other programs that are out there, and all of a sudden, Victorville looms very big in that type of a footprint. So, I'm hoping that we can satisfy Mr. Worsham with a contract that he'll stay with us on. I still feel that the $100,000 is fair, but I know that we're pinching pennies in this city right now in ways that we've never done before, and I certainly don't want to put any one thing above another. Police firing streets is number one, and the rest of it is number two. So, with that, I would encourage in the council to at least go ahead, as you've outlined, and support the approach, Jim, with a contract on a basis for his accomplishments.
I'll move forward, and I would look forward to bringing something back to the board.
I might. I am probably Mr. Worsham's biggest booster, biggest fan. I was involved in the original decision to bring him here. I'm encouraged about the fact you're going to extend some type of a contract, and I don't think anybody at this dais wants to be involved in the nitty-gritty of contract negotiations. And if you can hammer out an arrangement with Jim Worsham that causes him to stay engaged and stay enthused, I think that's wonderful. I'm also one of your biggest boosters and one of your biggest fans, so please don't take what I'm going to say as a criticism, but the reality is, in my individual judgment, that you're stretched awfully thin, and that with all of the things that we're trying to do, I am concerned that without a Jim Worsham, things will slip through the cracks. Not because anybody is not enthused about it, but you only have so many hours a day, and Peter Soderquist only has so many hours a day. So, I'm really encouraging you to really get into a discussion with Jim. Jim loves this city. He loves the airport, and I recognize that we're in tough economic times, but remember, we made a commitment to the Victor Valley in 1992. We would do everything in our power to use former George Air Force Base as the primary economic engine of the desert focused on creating jobs. Vast majority of the jobs that we've created have been in large measure through the efforts of Jim Worsham to bring world-class companies there. And I don't think that we have either the connections or the time to send you or any other staff member into the aviation world or the goods movement world and do the things that need to be done. So, I just, you know, I'm glad I'm not in your shoes or Jim Cox's shoes or the other department head's shoes having to wrestle with these very, very tough issues, but I encourage you to be as innovative and as creative as you can. We have some wonderful programs out there that, in my opinion, we will lose if we lose Jim Worsham. And so, I wish you luck because I think it's important. Once we're behind the mess that we're in right now, once the financial situation begins to improve, and it will at some point, we still have a primary mission out there, and that primary mission is to create jobs, and he is an essential, or at least has been an essential, part of that.
Then Mike, well, you didn't make a motion.
Oh, I'm going to make a motion, and then if it fails, I'll make another one. My motion is that we continue with Jim Worsham on a $100,000 contract and commission basis. That would be my initial idea and my motion. I still think that that dollar value is there in spite of our hard issues that we've got, so that would be my motion.
Second? No second? Fail.
Boy, I want to second it, but I'm going to defer, for the time being, to Keith's representation that he can't afford it out of the budget, that there isn't the $100,000, but that he will proceed in good faith to negotiate something with Jim. But while I'm not prepared to second it at this time, I will tell you, Mr. Rothschild is the maker of the motion, I certainly would want to revisit this in two weeks at the next regularly scheduled council meeting to see where we're at because I think it's that important to the long-term economic health of...
I don't have a problem with that. I think that there is some significant turnaround in this city as soon as the audit comes up and the other things and the bonding ratings come back. I think the issue of the $100,000 is not going to be nearly as critical as it is at this very moment, and you're being very responsible in a department head fashion, saying, today, I got to tell you, no. But a month from now, you know, that answer may or may not be different, but so I'm more or less trying to look through this thing and make sure that we don't... Jim's not here tonight because he's in a hospital getting hip replacement, so I could probably say this, and he probably wouldn't get word back. You know, if the negotiations without the $100,000 were to fail, I would hope he'd come back to the council and tell us that, and then see where we are at. So, I mean, I didn't want to put that out as a public statement and then say, well, there you go, we've got another option B out there, but he is worth more jobs than anybody that I can think of in the last five, six, seven years in this city, and he is worth more jobs coming in the next few years than I can think of. So, I just do not want him going away frustrated or any other way, and that's, I'll withdraw my motion.
Item number three.
Can't even find my agenda, that's how prepared I am. Item number three is a request to sell these turbine generators. I'm going to ask Amr Jaker, the Director of Public Works, to make a presentation on this item and give you the reasons as to why we are moving ahead with selling the equipment. We have information in front of you that requires, under the current ordinances and rules and regulations, that it be declared surplus under the recommendations of staff. And I've talked with staff, met with staff, read the recommendations carefully. I agree with the recommendations, have declared it surplus, but because of the council's involvement and the long history involved in this equipment and some other items associated with this particular program, felt that this should come before the council for full disclosure and a full discussion for the council, that the council should approve of this because they certainly was the approving entity in starting the program initially and the involvement that the city has been involved in in regard to purchasing the equipment and the whole program as it relates to the combustion turbine generator and the heat recovery steam generator. So, this obviously is a discussion on Foxborough. It has had a lot of discussion by the council, by the staff and the news media, and so we're a little bit sensitive in regard to this whole issue, and Amr and his staff has, and the staff from our VMS, Municipal Utility District, they have studied this, and Mr. Amr Jaker, the Director of Public Works, is prepared to make a presentation to the council at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cox, Honorable Mayor and council members. As the item, in the discussion, under discussion in this item, as it says that when the Foxborough facility was originally planned, it was planned as a 15-megawatt facility. Later on, as the need for electricity grew and there were other issues that came up, the facility was redesigned to handle a bigger electric load. The design went from 15 to 20 and then finally to 49.5 megawatts. When the design was being done, the construction was also progressing. So, some of the design, when the design was completed, some of the installations that are there, they are there for 49.5 megawatts. We had acquired three of these generators and steam recovery systems. Two of them were installed at the site, at the Foxborough site, and one of them, as we said... sitting there for the last few years at Carson and Abilene. There are two parts to it. We've looked at this very carefully. We think that if we move forward with this facility at all, it has to be a large generator. It cannot be a small generator because of the efficiency that we need to be able to sell this electricity to anybody that needs to buy it. These generators are designed basically to work to produce 5 megawatts, but also produce a lot of steam. The steam goes into a facility like Nutro, and then we recover the revenues from there. And combined revenues of steam and electricity make this viable option. Now, as you know, the Foxborough now is our interconnect. The maximum load that we see there is between 4 and 5 megawatts. So we have equipment for 15 megawatts, which is not very efficient. Our loads are at about 5 megawatts. But if we were to finish the, complete the facility, we should be looking at a 49.9-megawatt facility, doing a substation and doing an interconnect with that. And there is other options that have come up regarding bio, using biomass and biogas and other options. And we can look at all of those things. But in the context of where we are today, this equipment that we have is basically not needed for Foxborough. We have requested, and Mr. Cox has declared this equipment surplus. We've been negotiating with several buyers. In fact, there is additional information. Since the report was written last week, we had received two offers on the units. The first buyer, the one that was higher, was for 1.85 million. The second buyer was for 1.75 million. The second buyer did not have any conditions attached. The first buyer wanted to inspect the equipment, also had some other conditions relating to software and some other issues. Subsequent to the Friday's conversations, the second buyer, or the first buyer, which is 1.75, which is offering 1.85 million dollars, has reviewed the equipment, but still has some questions. We've talked to the buyer that offered 1.75 million dollars, which is Allenborough Energy Corporation, and they're willing to, they want us to look at their offer as well. They do not have a written offer at this point. So and since this thing changes day to day, my recommendation to council is that council-authorized staff enter into an agreement in the range of 1.75 million net or higher with any one of these two companies that can come up with a purchase and sale agreement and $100,000 hard money deposit. And that we would assure that the equipment will be sold for a price that's above the lowest bid that we've received. This is a very hard equipment to sell, especially considering the economic conditions that we are in. We've tried to sell this several times before. Last month or so, we had some buyers from a South American country. They came in and looked at it, and they ended up buying a different unit. So these things, these sale agreements are very hard to put together. The buyers want the information very fast, and that's the reason for having this on this meeting, on a special meeting, and then subsequent addendum to the information that was provided. This concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is any of this equipment, is any of this equipment involved in the ongoing discussions with Walter's power and that set of equipment?
This is not, that equipment is separate from this.
Secondly, although it's not a part of the issue in the recommendation, I'm curious about the 49.5 megawatts. You know, at one point, the city was aggressive in trying to move forward with some energy projects in the Foxborough area. I realize it wouldn't be appropriate to do it tonight, but at some point in the near future, I'd like to kind of have an update as to the totality of the energy issues at Foxborough, where we're at, where we may be going at some time in the future when the economy improves. Because it seems like it's kind of, it's kind of gone under the back burner, and I at least don't really have a clear view as to where we're at and where we hope as a city to be going. So it's not urgent, but I would like at some point to have that kind of a status report.
We are reviewing that. We are preparing an inventory of all the equipment that's at Foxborough. And we're also looking at the plans and looking at what options are available. As you know, we have applied for an energy grant to the $23 million. If we receive that grant, there's an option to move forward in a certain way. If we don't receive that grant, then we need to come up with a solution to the Foxborough issue.
Any other questions?
I'd like to hear more about the reuses that we could have at Foxborough as well. I think that there's various options there, and that certainly that renewable market is a dynamic thing, and it seems month to month the issues are changing. I look at it more as a self-inflicted wound by the state, but nevertheless, it's the law of the land. AB 32 is going to push the renewables. And if we've got an opportunity to put a project in play there, then the council needs to be briefed on that as to how we might be able to do that.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you. We do have a speaker, Mike Hoach.
Quick here, my name is Mike Hoach. I've been involved in liquidation of city surplus items across the United States for 45 years, working as an independent contractor from large companies all across the country. I just happened to see, and now I just heard, that we had three bids that we're looking at. I'm wondering why we don't go the auction method and find out what it's really worth. There's several options we can take. We can have a starting bid, we can have a, we can sell it subject to the city's approval. Just because we have an auction doesn't mean it has to go away. When I saw we're going to, all of a sudden, we're going to sell this, and I've been watching this and talking about it to some people in the city, and it looked like it was going to be a while before we disposed of any of this equipment. Now it looks like we're getting ready to do it. I'm wondering, as president of an auctioneer, so we've been 25 years, I'm wondering why we haven't gone to the auction method and just, let's just see if we can, in our hearts we'll know we got the most for it. Rather than take two or three bids from a broker, I'm wondering why we didn't go this method. I'd be glad to help you with my expertise if I could, I would charge, of course. I just, I can't see the city taking a big hit on a couple of generators if we've only got three bids. It doesn't make sense to me. I think that's all. If anybody's got any questions.
Question?
I tend to agree with your comment, and I don't want us to lowball ourselves too much on this equipment, even though we've gotten into a problem area here. The fact is that there are reasonable ways to get out, and the results are, we owe the taxpayers the maximum value on that. So your comments aren't lost on me, and I'm not sure if going to the open bid is the way to do it or not. We've got a piece of real estate and a piece of asset sitting there, and the longer we wait, the less value it has, I suppose. But there seems to be some options that we're not experts on here for that equipment that somebody like yourself or other people that are out there in the bidding community. But at the moment, we've got two offers here before us that seem to be in an area. And you're saying they're quite a bit lower than they ought to be for that equipment in your experience?
That I don't know. Maybe they're fair bids without investigating, I don't know. But I'm wondering how much investigation we did as a city. We know what that's worth. We know if they're fair bids because they got three or four bids.
Maybe our Public Works Director can get some information in...
I think Chuck, Mr. Fair, Chuck Bouquet has been kind of assigned to work on this when the speaker's finished, so that we don't engage in a debate. He'll be more, he'll be available for questions and to make a brief presentation to the council.
That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council Chuck Bouquet, Risk Manager, City of Victorville. I appreciate the speaker's comment relative to inquiring as to why we didn't do auction or bid. I think it's important to point out, and I would understand with the staff report, given that the background and context, if you will, which is an issue I always talk about here in the city, relative to Foxborough and other matters. But that being said, please be aware that there have been, that I'm aware of, six different brokers, if you will, that's doing international promoting and marketing relative to this equipment. It's a very specialized market. And as Mayor Cabralis will recall, with the Venezuelan interests, timing is the key, demand is the key relative to the actual equipment, and availability is the key. In this circumstance, there was considerable marketing and promotion that has been going on for the last year. As you know, we're involved in, the city's involved in litigation relative to Foxborough, which is a separate issue. But we, once we became capable of being able to go through and assess the value and mitigate our damages, and that would include selling equipment that we could not use for a project that could not go forward as had been proposed, we had a responsibility to determine the value of that equipment and then to seek all, any and all opportunities within that specialized industry as resources and get the highest and best dollars that could be available for that equipment. We're at a bit of a disadvantage with this particular equipment despite the fact it's brand new because of the time that had passed, warranties were gone. The value of this equipment was established as far from the standpoint of a base threshold amount that was verified with our consultants, as well as staff resources and industry resources that we conferred with. And in essence, all we're doing, and I don't want to oversimplify it because it's big, but it is material, as you would understand if you were considering purchase of this equipment, is that the price that is being considered by the city and this offer contemplates is this new equipment that has never been run, has been sitting for years, and has absolutely no warranty. This is as proposed as an as-is, where is transaction? Buyer beware, they take the equipment that's theirs and they pay us for that equipment. These companies, I've been actually handling the negotiations for the city with the brokers and with the various interests as to terms and conditions and helping Amr's department relative to the values and things as such and logistics. But they've been out, they've inspected the equipment. This actual offer that's here before you tonight is the highest of the two. We actually were pleasantly surprised to get two offers, but keep in mind, we were dealing with one piece of equipment at that point in time, and that's unit number three. So while that's encouraging, the Allenborough Group that Mr. Jocker referred to had hoped they were going to be the guys in the front of the pack. They got beat by $90,000 as far as net to the city. So that's why we have the Lincoln Group proposal here as far as the offer for us to then consummate the deal. We've already got a draft purchase and sale agreement ready to move forward. The good news for the city is, is when we were initially looking at at least one of these generators being able to be surplus and sold to recover some of our losses relative to the projects and such, by interest of having the Allenborough Group involved, and they've been quite involved and made several trips out here, and they're coming back after Thursday, they may be interested in buying one of the existing generators at Foxborough, possibly both. So this could end up as an opportunity for the city. While I appreciate an offer relative to auctioneering services, the challenge could be, it's a very limited market. The only way you're going to get people here to bid for something like that, other than through the broker outreach that has been done by trained and industry experts, if you will, with just their only compensation being a percentage of commission above the threshold, I don't know that you necessarily would get any different results than we've gone through the last year with seeking opportunities to sell this equipment. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions you have.
Question?
I'm just curious from an administrative standpoint. How did you, as our risk manager, get involved in peddling obsolete or no longer usable equipment?
Well, what happened, if I could offer, and it's a case of where I do whatever I can to help the city and sometimes take a beating for that, depending on which day you read the newspaper. But having said that, how that occurred is I also am responsible for contract administration for the city. And there were agreements that were brought forth to the city that were not favorable or beneficial to the city under our contract administration scope. So from making the brokers unhappy, saying that's not going to fly, and this needs to be commissioned above the threshold amount and under the terms and conditions it will dictate not what you want it to be, it evolved into communication and dialogue. And Amr said, why don't you just continue rolling with that? They've helped with the logistics. I've been holding hands with the brokers and their representatives, and I think that we've made a pretty good team in keeping this moving forward. So we were looking for continuity, and obviously, my objective is just to be part of the solution, and we work together to try to accomplish that. So that's how it happened. I just happened to pick up the phone the wrong day.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, sir.
I agree, timing is essential here, and we do have an opportunity to perhaps, hopefully it'll be quick, sell these assets that we have that have been sitting here for a while, and we're not using them. So I think I would, in a motion to go ahead and with staff recommendation, to have the city manager enter into contract with either one of the...
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'd like to add, just to clarify that motion and include that the city manager has made the determination, declaration that the equipment is in fact surplus.
It's already in the materials we've received.
Second?
Also, under the regular meeting of the city council and its boards and districts, we also have a closed session.
Mayor Cabralis, the items for discussion in closed session are fully agendized on the agendas. Two of them deal with property negotiations, the other two deal with litigation. And to the extent there's any reportable action with respect to any one of those items, we will come out and report that at the conclusion of the closed session.
Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District, and City Council of the City of Victorville. As customary, we will have the invocation that will be given by Pastor Ray Gim from the Gibley Community Church, that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by our Chief of Police, Captain Reynolds.
Mayor Cabralis, before, if I could just interrupt, there was no reportable action out of either the special meeting closed session or the regular session closed session.
Father, we come before you tonight, and we face many challenges in our city. And we thank you for leaders that are really seeking you and are really looking for your direction. And God, as a people, as a city, as citizens of Victorville, we come before you tonight, and God, we just ask you to give our leaders wisdom, and we ask your blessing on this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States, the public for which it stands.
Item number one is the public comment. And I do have-- Guards, Dorothy Miller.
Dorothy Miller, why fill out a white card? No one ever responds to them. Here we're asked to do something, and nobody does anything. I never got a response yet. Did we pay for the trip to Vegas? Did we pay for the trip out of the country? Where's the budget? Having a hard time because you have to hide things that we found in the first people that was doing the audit? What is going on? Things are not getting done. What happened to the grand opening of Sunset Park? And fire station? That's not done yet. Moneybags pay off some council members. Is this good for the people? What goes on in the back room? Some deals made? Council members think they are better than the people. Moneybags buy the council members. We don't need this. Still on China. Let's, let's give China up. We already got a big lawsuit on it. Is there something going on that you guys think you need to still go for China? You guys need to take care of the money. You need to get back and do things for this city. The city needs to be taken care of, not everything for the airport. Now, I'd really like some answers, and I'd like them in writing, so I can refer back to them if you don't answer them. That's what happened last time. That's why they're back on this piece of paper tonight. Thank you.
Tom LaFortun.
Good evening, members. I hate to say this, but I've been on the road for quite a few years. So I just sold my truck last year, and seeing what you people have done, I missed out on a lot of mistakes. In case you don't know, why you're sitting there is to take care of the people of Victorville, not yourselves. You're supposed to be representing them, not buying stupid equipment for a hundred-and-some million dollars that you know nothing about. You cannot keep taking money that doesn't belong to you and toss it out the window. If this was private sector, you would be in jail. And you look at contracts, what does that mean? You have two lawyers sitting side by side, neither one of you can figure out how to do your paperwork. But yet you keep burying the city, walk around patting each other on the back, saying you do a good job. I don't see how. Come next election, I imagine the city people, the city of Victorville is going to have some new members up there, and I will be one of them, hopefully, leading the parade.
We'll now go into our regular meetings, and the first one is the Library Board of Trustees. Are there any revisions?
There are no revisions.
We have the consent calendar, item number three. Move for approval.
Second.
Next, we have the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority and Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, and our Chairman, Councilman Caldwell, will chair those.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. Item three on the rail authority agenda is the consent calendar.
Second.
That concludes the rail authority agenda, the airport authority agenda. Item three is consent calendar. Motion would be in order. Approval?
Second.
Item four is a contract with Busco Utility--
Excuse me, I need one more vote, Chairman Caldwell.
Oh, I keep clicking, and then it reverts.
Okay. Okay.
Item four is a contract to Busco Utility Design, Inc., $41,800 for design and coordination of the DPSG Building Dry Utility.
Move approval? Second.
Item five is a contract, again, to Busco Utility Design, Inc., for $103,300 for design and coordination of the SCLA Eastside Dry Utility System.
Move for approval? Second.
That concludes the-- Airport Authority agenda.
Chairman Caldwell, I'd like to add something to that agenda. It's also going to be needed for the city council. There's a potential litigation, I think, affects both the Airport Authority and the city pursuant to government code 54954.2B2. There's information that made available to the city manager late today that may fortunately force the city into litigation, both as the Airport Authority and the city council. So I'd like for you to add closed session, so we can go into closed session pursuant to government code 54956.9B to discuss potential litigation.
I'll move the findings to add it to the agenda. Favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Item will be dealt with in closed session with other closed session items, and if there is reportable action, that will occur when we come out of closed session.
Next, we have the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. And we have any revision to the agenda?
Yes, staff has requested that item number four be continued to September 18th.
We have the consent calendar.
Move for-- Second.
Okay, we have item on the Victorville Water District, we have the consent calendar. Item number three.
Move for approval? Second.
Item number four is a request to award a contract to Amherst Metals Corporation for SCLA for the industrial wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $1,798,400.
Move for approval? Second.
And we have the city council agenda. Item number two, revisions.
And Mayor Cabralis, I would like to add the same closed session that we did under the Airport Authority pursuant to government code 54954.2B2 to discuss potential litigation related to the information of the city manager.
Move approval?
Second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, we have a continued public hearing. And at this time, I will open up the public hearing. This is on Development Department is requesting a continuance of case number Development 09-0004 to the meeting of August 18, 2009, in order to complete internal review of study. Should I go ahead and open, open up the meeting, the public hearing? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on item number three? For or against? Hearing none, I will continue the public hearing. To August, we will continue the public hearing to August the 18th. Item number four is a public hearing. Public hearing called to hear arguments for or against adoption of ordinance number 2245. And I will now open up the public hearing on item number four. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four?
Good afternoon.
Will you state your, your name and address for the, for the record?
My name is David Lopez.
My home address?
My home address?
Yes.
14123, Dapple Court, Victorville. On item number four-- No, I'm sorry, you know what, the one I needed to talk about is number five.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll wait on that.
I will now close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion to--
I need to read that.
Read the title.
Okay, in accordance with the city council, City of Victorville ratifying ordinance number 2244, which extended the moratorium on establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries and the distribution of medical marijuana at businesses in the City of Victorville.
Approval? Second.
Item number five is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against introduction of ordinance number 2246. And I do have, I will open up the public hearing. Do have two parts here, and one is for Maria Lopez.
I'm not too clear if it's against medical marijuana, but if it is, I'm speaking on public hearing number five, ordinance 2246, that it is being declared that an establishment, maintenance, or operation of a business that conducts activities in violation of the state or federal law, and declaring as a public nuisance that it is a nuisance to operate medical marijuana dispensaries within the City of Victorville. Definition of a nuisance, a public nuisance is defined as an inconvenience or troublesome offense. First of all, it's the state law, so we're not offending anyone because we have guidelines and laws to abide by. An inconvenience to who? We're not drug dealers, we're a business. First of all, medical cannabis is not a nuisance, in my opinion, because it helps patients with ailments such as arthritis, cancer, et cetera. What is a nuisance in your minds? I hope you can reach an agreement on this subject and consider the disabled persons and veterans. Thank you.
David Lopez.
Good afternoon. Once again, it's not clear, at least to me, whether this is a good thing, a positive thing for a business, or is this a negative thing? I mean, can we at least get that answer? If it's a negative or a positive thing?
Well, this is a public hearing, for you to either voice your opposition or your support for the ordinance.
All right, well, the thing is, it's, you know, it's a state law, we know that. The city council, and I don't know if you guys are trying to do this or not, but, you know, when you say you're breaking state or federal law, we all know it's legal in the state, we already went through that. You're not the federal department, it's not your department to handle this, and so on. You're not in violation of issuing a license to someone who wants to open up a business, you're protected by the law of the state of California. The federal department will deal with their own problems in their own ways. Also, you know, we talked about before, we honor these soldiers that go out and fight for us, you know? I was an airborne ranger back in the Army in my day, you know? And you get patted on the back, thank you for a great job, and so on. Then they forget about you. You get disabled and you get hurt in your lifetime, whether it's through the military or whether it's through your work. And, you know, you come across a situation. The use of medical cannabis, I explained before, helps me. To take away that from me is, I believe, is a violation in my disability act rights. And I don't know if this is, you know, the way I'm reading it, it sounds like it's something to stop. If it's not, and if it's an ordinance, in case, you know, the business goes outside of this, we can use this against you, then that's a good thing. But if it's against it, and if it's just to shut it down completely, it's wrong, and it's a violation of the rights of our veterans. What about these guys that come home? They may come home with no arms or legs, or back problems. They may choose to use cannabis, they may live in our cities, and I'm sure there's a few that we already celebrated here, and they choose to do this. But you're already deciding for them that, you know, you guys have to drive to LA, sorry buddy, you know, but thanks for doing what you did out there, you know, sorry you lost your legs, or, you know? And too bad for you, we know you're disabled, but hey, great job, you know, like they do all of us. Got to reconsider, you know? It's not your personal feelings here. You can't use your personal feelings involved in this. Really, if you got the money, if this turns out, we say, well, you know what, this isn't going to pass, we're going to stop it, it votes, it's blocked, you know, and so on.
Mr. Lopez, you have about 10 minutes, 10 seconds?
I'm going to go further, I'm not stopping here, I'm telling you, I'm going to go further. And if you got that kind of a money to afford and waste on, you know, whatever it takes, then God bless us all, you know? Nothing personal, I hope you guys reconsider. I hope I'm wrong, and I'm reading this wrong, but--
Your time, Cup.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing, and I would have the title of the ordinance read.
In accordance with the city council, the City of Victorville adding sections to chapter 1302, 13.02 of the Victorville Municipal Code declaring as a public nuisance the establishment, maintenance, or operation of a business that conducts activities in violation of state or federal law, and declaring as a public nuisance the establishment, maintenance, or operation of medical marijuana dispensaries within the City of Victorville.
Move away from the reading, and introduction of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
Mayor Cabralis, I think Mr. Lopez deserves a response to his comments. The ordinance, as written, would prohibit that type of an establishment in the City of Victorville.
Next is the consent calendar. Move for approval? Item number seven, the request to approve amendment number one to the contract with M.W. Bilt and Associates for services at the Doris Davis Park.
Approval? Second. Second.
Mayor Cabralis, somewhat related to that, I just would like for the council to know. Staff, we were not there. We had the Doris Davis Memorial last Thursday, which, Mr. Cox was there. But I, the comment I wanted to make is that I wanted to, uh, want to compliment John Gargan and Captain Reynolds. They were on the committee to put the thing together, it was a huge success, and a great deal of the credit goes to their efforts and, and to their presentations that night. It was great for Doris, and, uh, they did, uh, a good job representing our city, so I just want to acknowledge John Gargan and Captain Reynolds' role in what?
Absolutely.
Huge, huge event.
It's a great tribute to a wonderful person that we knew for a long time. Thank you. Item number eight, is a request to adopt resolution number zero-nine zero-six-nine.
Mayor Cabralis, this is not technically a public hearing, but it is a hearing for the benefit of the property owners, so I would ask that you, uh, give any property owners that may be present the opportunity to present any concerns they have to the council. Uh, also, I am going to request a continuance of this item. Property owners have made it known that they want to follow a procedure which is outlined and now being, uh, requested by Caltrans, which requires a hearing before C T C. Add potentially five to ninety days to the process, uh, in the Caltrans manual that we have no control over, uh, something that previously Caltrans has not necessarily enforced, but are requesting and providing property owner with the opportunity to have that proceeding. So, uh, I'd for you to give property owners an opportunity to be heard, but then I'm going to request.
Should I go ahead and open up a public hearing?
But yes.
It's not a public hearing. It's not a public hearing.
Not, not a public hearing, but if there's any property owners that would like to speak.
Yeah, on item eight and nine, are there any property owners that, uh, would like to speak on, on the item? Item number eight and nine. Not, then we'll continue the item.
And I want, I want to put on the record to comment on this item and the other one. I sat on that sandbag board for many years there, and Ryan's on the board now, lucky him. But this is a classic example of the dysfunctional attitude that's in this state when it comes to processing our projects in a timely fashion. Uh, this delay to go to the state, uh, state board for a review of something that is so mechanical and, and pervasive that it doesn't even, it doesn't even raise to the level of, of protecting your property rights, and yet, it's one of those little bits of pieces in there, just like environmental movement uses from time to time to hold up our highway and freeway projects, um, again, this should never be here, but it is, and the language is in there, and the language is in there for a very good reason, to slow down and harass the process. I'm, I, I was born in this state, and I, I tell you, it's a, it's become a very dysfunctional state, it's all wrapped around how slow they can go for, in all good, all due respect to the state, uh, uh, job protection. The more work you have sitting out there in those bureaucracies, those unaccountable bureaucracies that don't stand for election or, uh, for us or anybody else, uh, this is the kind of actions that go on, that, this shouldn't be on here, but yet it is. It's legal, it's there, and we have to comply with it. But these kind of cleanup things are what this state ought to be about. If we ever get to a constitutional convention, which may not be too far down the road, uh, the minutia of things that, that are, we're talking about now ought to be addressed in those type of things, maybe clean up the calendar and start with a brand new state again that has some, some kind of functionality to its bureaucracy, and accountability too, I might add.
Cabralis, I'd like to make comments as well. I agree with the sentiment of Councilman Rothschild, I disagree with our city attorney's estimate of time, and I'm willing to make a wager, Mr. D. Vordenowski, that, uh, you're looking probably at a five or six month delay in the process minimum, and if this goes all the way to the C T C, uh, Sacramento for, for a hearing, which I suspect based on the players, that it may well do that, I would guess that you could add a year to the process of going forward with the disqualified interchange. Absolutely ludicrous, yet at this late stage in the game, you have a bureaucrat waving a pin that effectively delays the project and undoubtedly will result in more costs.
Well, I hope you're wrong, but I'm not taking the bet.
That was for item eight and nine?
I'd like, if possible, to handle nine separately, just to give the property owner their opportunity as well.
We have item number nine, is a request to adopt resolution number zero-nine zero-seven-zero. Are there any property owner in the audience that would, uh, might you speak to item number nine? This als, this item will also be continued?
Continuance of the item. The next agenda, and then we'll probably keep continuing it until we hear back from C T C.
B two.
Motion to continue?
Motion to continue, okay. I'll move.
Nine. Second.
Item number ten, is a request, uh, from council to approve amendment number three to the design cooperative agreement between the city of Victorville and state of California for La Mesa and Esquali interchange. Is for an amount of, uh, four million eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
No for approval? Second.
That's an amount, uh, money coming to the city of Victorville. For clarification. Item number eleven, is a request for, uh, to approve sheltering agreement with Victor Valley Animal Protective League for fiscal year two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, budgeting the amount of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for sub, services.
Approval. Second.
Item number twelve, is a request to accept, uh, accept, offer to purchase two gas engine generator units at Foxborough. And we do have, before we get into the, the, the information here from our staff, we do have Norm Miller that wants to speak to the item.
Council members, my name is Norman Miller, and I just had a couple questions. Generators cost us originally, do we know that?
We have staff.
You'll have that?
What's your other?
I'm just curious how much we made or lost on this whole thing.
I, I can have staff, um, you know, provide your answer, but is there any other question, or is that what?
No, that was maybe, I'm just curious what that was.
Honorable mayor, council member, these two units that we're selling at, um, Foxborough, and the reason for sale is that we are now interconnected with, with Edison, and we no longer use these, we use these units to, uh, generate electricity. And the, the original costs were, I believe, were around seven hundred fifty thousand each for these units, um, but, but we ran them, we ran them for a long time, there's a lot of hours on these, um, on these units. These units are more like a used car they were selling. Um, the, the, the sale earlier that we had of the equipment was new equipment that we had never used, so it's, uh, you can look at the cost of acquisition and then cost of selling that equipment and, uh, figure out what the loss is. In this case, uh, we believe we are getting a price for what it's worth, and the rest of the use, uh, we did, we did use the, for the life of the, uh, the equipment, we used them, so therefore, uh, even though we're losing the, the money on this, it's, it's, it's like selling an old car. Uh, when you bought it new, you sold it old, you're selling it for the value, what it's at the market. So, we believe it's a, it's a good offer for these two units. We have four of these, we have two at S A L A, we are using them right now to generate electricity. These two have been sitting for, for a while, we have surplus them. So, uh, that's my presentation, if you have any other questions.
Um, yeah, some information came to me as I, uh, late today on, on the equipment, the recollection I had was there about seven hundred fifty thousand each, but what was shared with me was something I wasn't familiar with today, and I'm not sure it's true, the veracity of that, and I'd ask you before you consummate the deal, that you check, follow through and check this, and that was Caterpillar was responsible for adding, enhancing the equipment with some, uh, air quality mitigation that was, according to this information, never applied, that would add substantial value to the equipment. So I, for my part at least, uh, before you closed the deal with Caterpillar, they're the ones that were responsible for the original equipment and the, uh, upgrade to that equipment, uh, they never met the air quality standards that they were supposed to meet, and that equipment is rather valuable, especially with the green movement going on in this state today. Uh, so even though they're offering, I guess, one fifty, a hundred and eight, fifty-eight thousand for one and a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for the other because of the differential in the hours run on each one, uh, that you check on that, uh, aspect of those engines and see, see what Caterpillar has to say about that, or, did we ever get that equipment in play, uh, because it does add value to it.
The equipment that you're referring to, council member, was, uh, it's equipment that, that's used for air quality. Um, depending on where this equipment is used, it may or may not have the value. I believe we, we did not finish installation of the equipment because there was added cost, there was added cost to these units that were just sitting there, therefore that we didn't really see the need to finish. I will, I will get a report, and I will send it forward to the city manager, uh, for, for his review, but basically, uh, information that I have on this is that we did not finish installation of those, uh, units because it didn't add any value for us to have that on there. Now, if it added value to the unit or not, I'll find out, and I'll, I'll forward you that information.
But you're going to find that out before you make the sale to Caterpillar, right? Because the other part of, the other side of this question is, if in fact there is some significant value added to that equipment, and we're selling it at, let's say, one fifty, and the equipment, and I'm just picking some numbers, I'm not suggesting, uh, it, that ramps it up to two hundred or three hundred thousand or something, if that equipment had been applied and not been applied, then that ought to be accredited, because we're selling it back to Caterpillar, who's the one that was responsible for the original contract.
If that's the wish of the council, that's what we will do.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's all. I just want to put that caution, because I, I don't know how much of that is true or not, I haven't seen the contracts, but I've just, you know, been, as I've been, as I looked at it, I said, okay, if there's something that ought to be there and it adds value, Caterpillar ought to recognize it, tell us about it, give us, you know, quantify a number on top of that, if they say, no, it, it doesn't apply because we did do it and maintained it, uh, then let me know that, to let the council, excuse me, let the council know, uh, report back on that. On those, because you're, you planned to sell some more of the, those, those pieces, right? Or is that the only two we have?
Um, these are, we have four of these, two of them, we're using two of them, and there's two that are sitting at, at Foxborough. These two are the ones that are sitting at Foxborough, and our plan is to, to sell these.
Okay.
Now, these here have substantial hours on them, as I understand.
They do have substantial amount of hours on them.
Questions?
entertain a motion on item number twelve?
No for approval?
May I request that the motion also include the revision on the agenda that the city manager has made the declaration, these are surplus.
Second.
Item thirteen is, uh, presentations for reports from council members. I'll start to my right.
I have none.
Well, I just want to echo the, um, some of the comments that were made by Councilman Caldwell and Rothschild on this Caltrans issue. Since I am our representative of sandbag, uh, I do intend to bring this up to them. I expect that they, along with us, um, will hopefully partner in trying to, uh, to push back on, on this particular issue. And if nothing else, I'd like, I'd like us to consider asking our, uh, senator or assemblyman to, um, draft legislation to get rid of this process, so that's, that's what I'm going to try to do.
Sorry, I would agree with you, Ryan, when you think about the, the, the years that it takes to do some of these projects, and, um, at the detriment to, to the community that, that desperately, desperately needs the, uh, the interchange, for example, and, and to have someone at the last, uh, almost the last minute, uh, come up with some, some rule that's been hidden away somewhere in, in the books, it's, uh, it's not good for us, so, uh, any other comment from council?
Just one, I would add, even waive all environmental reviews on freeway interchanges and additional lanes to freeways to that type of a bill. I mean, that's another environmental area that not only costs money and adds a year or two to the process, but is not necessary because all the environmental reviews were done when the original projects were put in play.
Not a bad idea, but I wanted to get past committee.
Okay. That concludes our meeting, we do have, uh, one item session, potential litigation since government code, uh, five four nine five six point nine B.
There is no reportable action as a result of the city's, uh, closed session held pursuant to hearing.